Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the singing of "O Canada."
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With flowing hearts we see thee, heart, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance, Linda? Any declarations of conflict of interest? Approval of agenda, do we have any additions or deletions? Somebody's lights on before...oh, okay, go ahead. Said I'd master this before, I was in for three years and I'm not... I just focus on what's important and it's not the buttons, okay. Top left. Okay, councillor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship.
Still not on.
No, CAO.
CAO, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, worship. Item 7A is dealt with further on down the agenda under the Heritage Committee report.
Okay.
So that can be deleted.
Okay, so we're gonna remove 7A.
7A.
7A, we're gonna remove, but because it's dealt with later. Okay? Anything else? No? Councillor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship. I'm just looking at 7J. I'd like to take that off the agenda and I might put that the next Yarmouth Leisure Services meeting, I think that might be a good place to deal with that and see where it goes with that. I know councillor Mackay-Zach, we've had discussions before with councillor Churchill over there, so I think that'd be the place for that.
Good. That's everything for additions or deletions? Okay, I'm looking for...
Motion to accept with the additions and deletions.
Councillor Mooney, seconded by councillor Dawes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Approval of minutes, we have public hearing July 9th, 2015. Moved by deputy, seconded by councillor Dawes. Any discussion?
Aye.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Town council meeting, July 9th, 2015.
Second.
Moved by deputy, seconded by councillor Mooney. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. The committee of the whole, July 23rd, 2015.
Move.
Councillor Dawes?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. And we have town council meeting, July 23rd, 2015.
Shall move?
Moved by councillor Mooney.
Second.
Second by councillor Dennis. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Business, 7A's been removed, 7B, request for decision vending on public property. Caroline, did you wish to...we can get you to speak to this? Thank you. I want to get her on the camera. Thank you.
All right, so at the June 11th council meeting, council approved a motion that staff be directed to investigate the possibility of setting up a policy regarding permitting vendors seasonal retail uses to establish on town-owned property. Council recently passed an amendment to the town's land use bylaw that would permit seasonal retail uses, which are defined as commercial uses of seasonal or part-time nature involving the sale of goods which is operated during a timeframe of no more than nine months in all zones except environmentally sensitive and residential areas. So this amendment allows seasonal retailer vendors to establish on properties throughout town, and as a property owner within the town, council is now looking to consider whether or not they should allow retail vendors to set up on their property and where that would be most appropriate. So what I've done is I've attached a discussion paper for council about kind of the benefits and the concerns of allowing vendors to set up on town-owned property. I also kind of took it a little further. While I was investigating this, I got some calls from different vendors in the town who gave me some comments about the vendors bylaw. And also Russell went on vacation and we had CFest, and I was enforcing the vendors bylaw, and I realized there were some things that were difficult to understand or were missing that would be kind of appropriate to add. So I've also attached a proposed...some proposed amendments to the vendors bylaw that would make it easier to enforce for Russell and would also allow vendors on town-owned property. Within this, it's specific to only allowing vendors on vacant town-owned property, public parking lots, public wharfs, or within public parks. So they wouldn't be permitted to set up like in front of town hall or on a place or on a property where there's already a building in a use that's appropriate, it would just be in these areas. And with this, I've also proposed a new type of vendors permit that would be just for festivals, it would be an umbrella vendors permit where if you're having a festival or a public event, you could come in and register and we would be able to issue one overall permit for the vendors that that event would like to have there. Previously, we could only issue permits for a month for an individual vendor, so this gives us a little bit more flexibility.
Good. Okay. Councillor Mooney, go ahead.
Thank you, Caroline. Caroline, I had a conversation with the people from the Antique Auto Show or Auto Club that was a very successful event here a couple of weeks ago, and they're talking next year that they might have to elongate their area, so...but it's still possible if we closed off Main Street on that Saturday, that a vendor's license could be, when this town hall is closed, be put on the property here at town hall?
If they want it to set up here on our property?
Yes. During non-hours. So on a Saturday or a Sunday, I'm just wondering if that's...
But under a spe...you're talking about a special event?
Yes.
For the umbrella permit. I think with the wording that that would still be acceptable to do it as part of the event, because we've...how we've set it up is that whoever's holding the festival or event, they can come in, they apply, they let Russell, who will be enforcing it, our bylaw enforcement officer, they'll give him a list of the vendors that they've approved to be at their event, so Russell's not guessing that maybe an event might want Red Bull or someone selling at their event. And they will say the locations and Russell will just pre-approve them, so I think it would be acceptable under the umbrella permit, but we wouldn't sell to a seasonal retail vendor to set up in front of town hall for, you know, nine months.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Councillor Mackay-Zach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Mayor. Question is, will this be going to the PAC?
No, as...the PAC is only Advisory Committee for Amendments to the Municipal Planning Strategy, the Land Use Bylaw, or for Development Agreements.
Okay.
I don't typically take amendments to bylaws to them.
Okay, so this is for decision this evening? Is that what it is?
Yes.
To approve the first reading?
First reading of it. Okay. And you're comfortable with this?
Yes, and I have shared it with our solicitor, and I've also sat down and explained it to Russell and made sure that he felt it was, as somebody who enforces the bylaws...
Are you comfortable with the nine months versus 11 months of vending?
The nine months is a definition that's within our land use bylaw, so to change that, that would require a land use bylaw amendment. Typically, a seasonal retail use is nine months.
What's that again?
A typical seasonal retail use, that's how they're defined, is by eight...by nine months, but that's something we could change if that was something...
Yeah, but when you buy a license, and I bought a license, and it's...when you buy the license, it's for a year, from January till December, but you only really have nine months.
Yes.
So you're lapsing whatever. Provincially, you're only entitled to, I think it's 11 months or something like that for a mobile.
Well, it's nine continual this month.
Pardon?
It's nine continuous months, so if you packed up for a month and then came back, you could be there for so many months out of the year anyway.
It is?
If that clarifies, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you're covered for a year.
Okay, okay.
But it's only for nine continuous months.
Okay, good, thank you.
Councillor Langel?
Thank you very much, your worship. Caroline, this is wonderful. I went through this and very progressive, I love the new language, I love the terminology, mobile vending unit, I love the...you put in some stuff, I was involved with a business a number of years ago that invested $5,000 in a push cart vending, only to be told by the town you couldn't use it, because it was only good for ice cream trucks or some fool thing. So I'm really pleased that we're, as the mayor would say, opening the doors here to a lot of entrepreneurs who are coming into our community who could start a little bit, and I think this is good, it's gonna...yeah, we're under...thanks Danny, we're starting and we're entering the 21st century, so I just want to give my appreciation for a great job. And, your worship, I believe a motion is in order, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this first reading and proceed to our second reading.
Second.
Moved by councillor Langel, seconded by councillor Mackay-Zach. Is there any further discussion on this?
Questions.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried.
Well done.
Yep, thank you, Caroline.
As always.
I got a quick question for the...
Just need your light on, that's all. Councillor Mackay-Zach?
Where I am a vendor and I second that motion and spoke on it, would I be in a conflict?
Okay, you're not a vendor on town property?
No.
You're not going to be.
No. No, I'm not on town property, no.
No, but...
I just want to make it clear.
It's for you to determine whether you're in a conflict and not to...
Well, I'll say...
...blame me or for ruining it or that.
I'll say as others say, I don't believe I'm in a conflict.
I don't think you are for this point, but yeah, you should decide those on your own.
Okay, good, thank you. Town's Task Force Report, councillor Mooney. And keep your light on.
Yeah.
Good, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I make a motion that the town of Yarmouth send a letter to the Minister of Service Nova Scotia, Honorable Zach Churchill, requesting his immediate attention to the town's Task Force Report.
I just have a question. For some reason, I'm thinking it's municipal affairs and Minister Fiore still has service Nova Scotia.
Okay.
So do you want...
It's sitting on Minister Churchill's desk, so...
Yeah, so we're just gonna change the wording to the Minister of Municipal Affairs.
Yep. Perfect.
Requesting his immediate attention. Okay, moved, did somebody second that? Moved and seconded by the deputy, go ahead councillor.
I don't know whether the mover and seconder would be in agreement, there are two parts, and your worship, I know you're involved now in this quite heavily, there are two parts of that town's task force that I know we from Yarmouth worked hard to get in, and I'm almost tempted in that motion to highlight those two parts, and that was the variable tax rate part and the brownfield part, were the two areas that were of greatest concern when we were crafting that. I don't know, maybe the CAO may want to comment, but I really would like to see, I know I've spoken to the minister on this as well recently when we were down in Pam with Joanne Barard, and those were the two parts of Yarmouth that we really have in that task force that, when I was involved in the day with it, and I don't know whether Phil, you and Jim would agree to add that, it would simply be highlighting that, I think the language is right, CAO, the variable tax rate, I believe that was the language you were using, the ability that we could have different tax rates within a community instead of the one uniform, and the other one was brownfield taxation, the idea that if there's a hunk of property that is brownfield, that's owned by a business, we would have the right to tax that at a different, maybe higher rate in order to get that being more economically viable. Those are the two parts, and I don't know whether, CAO, you'd like to address that or not.
CAO?
If it...in crafting the letter, we can pull out those recommendations and put particular attention if council agrees.
Yep.
You're both good?
Good question.
Okay, so just so we're clear, we're adding to what councillor Mooney said, the variable tax rates and the brownfield taxation to the entire, and we'll highlight that in the letter. Okay, any further discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Councillor Mooney?
Your worship, I would make a motion that the town of Yarmouth send congratulations and best wishes to Dr. Benoit Robichaud on his retirement after 58 years of service to the people of southwestern Nova Scotia in his optometry practice, for his years of dedicated service to numerous volunteer organizations such as the Knights of Columbus, the Lions Club, and the Villa St. Joseph, and for his service to the citizens of Yarmouth and the Nova Scotia Legislature.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion? Councillor Langel?
Thank you councillor Mooney for that, and it would be really nice, I know you're sitting on the Recreation Committee, what a wonderful Volunteer of the Year for the town of Yarmouth, just thinking.
What, I didn't...
I'm just saying, what a wonderful...we do the nominees, I know Phil...
Volunteer, yeah.
What I mean, this man is a saint, I mean, he's in my...he was my optometrist, I hope not in conflict, but really, the man is a gem, and you know, he's been very humble and he's never, in my experience, been recognized for the tremendous community, so I'm kind of hoping, I don't know what your process is there councillor, on recreation for that, but if you and councillor Dan could keep that in mind, I think you would make a wonderful nominee.
Sure would.
He is a saint, he puts up with his son-in-law too.
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Councillor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship. That the town of...
Antique Auto Club.
That the town of Yarmouth send correspondence to the Roaring Twenties Antique Auto Club for their successful event, request a meeting with the club regarding plans for next year's festival.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Councillor Mooney?
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. That the town of Yarmouth, with support of the development officer and staff, host a forum for young entrepreneurs and landlords regarding filling empty storefronts on Main Street for the next tourism season.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Yep, go ahead.
Were you referring...sorry, in the motion, your worship, I think is probably referring to the economic development officer?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we're just gonna mover and seconder, we're just gonna add economic, okay? That's good. Okay, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I'll get you on.
Thank you, your worship, that the town of Yarmouth send correspondence to Eastlink, expressing opposition to the new fee schedule for rural Nova Scotia with copies of correspondence sent to Minister of Communications, Honorable Zach Churchill, Premier Stephen McNeil, NDP leader, Honorable Maureen McDonald, and PC leader, Honorable Jamie Bailey.
Can I have a seconder?
Question.
Yep. Councillor Langel?
I may need, and again, I just thought of this a second ago, I agree with your motion, councillor, but one of the biggest concerns is with this new fee schedule, it's a little bit deeper than that in rural Nova Scotia, seems to me there was a broadband restriction they were looking at, that the amount of data that could be used in rural Nova Scotia was being severely curtailed, and I would really suggest you may want to put that in there, because that's, to some people, especially in Yarmouth where we have a lot of software developers here, it's critical to have access, full access to the internet, and that you may want to add that to your motion as a suggestion. I'm not sure what the language is there, CAO, you're more of a techie than I am, but I think that was one of the big issues in rural Nova Scotia.
Yeah, I think that's what it is, broadband restriction. Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, it is about the amount of gigabytes, and it does only apply to people who don't have a wired service, who have an antenna on their house, because they don't live in an area where there's actually a wire. But it is a five gigabyte limit, I believe, and the extra cost can get up to $20 a month.
Okay, so if we change that and the mover and seconder agree, it would be that the town of Yarmouth send correspondence to Eastlink, expressing opposition to their new fee schedule and broadband restriction?
Yes.
Okay, and the rest would continue on as is?
Perfect.
You're good councillor Mooney?
Perfect.
You seconded, okay? All right, any further discussion?
Question.
Questions been called by everyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Councillor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship, that the town of Yarmouth send congratulations to the host committee of the 2015 Canadian National Old Times Baseball Federation Championships, and to our Canadian national champions, the Yarmouth Coastal Financial Gateways. And what a weekend it was.
Isn't that just the coolest? We have the national champions. Seconded by deputy mayor. Any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Councillor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship, and might need a little help with this motion, even though it is here in black and white, there's something in the Chronicle Herald here a couple of weeks ago that the town of Yarmouth, this is with Truro, the town of Yarmouth send correspondence to the Honorable Zach Churchill regarding flood remediation, funding for Truro, and funding for roadwork in Sydney, requesting that he investigate the possibility of the town of Yarmouth qualify for similar type funding, and what that is, is I think it was a fund over and above what the Department of Municipal Affairs does for flooding, and it was actually roadwork in the town or the city of Sydney, so something in the city limits, so I don't know if we can qualify for something like that, because if the citizens don't know, maybe the CAO can expand on a little bit on what we're responsible for in the town of Yarmouth and what the citizens in the municipal areas are responsible for.
Yeah, please, please do. I'm gonna let the CAO ask, answer that, and then councillor Dawes will go to you.
Thank you.
Good, okay, CAO?
Sure, so speaking specifically of roads?
Yes.
Okay, so the responsibilities of towns within Nova Scotia, we're responsible for all capital costs and all maintenance costs related to roads, so that's repaving, that's sidewalks, it's snow removal, is everything to do with it, comes out of your municipal property tax in the town of Yarmouth. In rural municipalities, the deal is a little different. The provincial Department of Transportation looks after road construction, road maintenance, except for J-class roads, which are subdivision roads in the municipalities, and in those cases, in most cases in rurals where they have subdivision roads, the municipality contracts that service to the province and pays so much per kilometer. So in rural municipalities, your snow removal, your paving and so on is paid for through your provincial taxes. In the town of Yarmouth, your roads, maintenance and capital costs are paid for through your property taxes, so your provincial taxes don't actually contribute to your road maintenance and your road construction within the town. Is that crystal clear?
Good.
It's pretty...
That was impressive.
Yeah, we're paying for all of ours and partial. Yeah, part of theirs, okay. Okay, councillor Dawes, you're on.
Thank you, your worship, reading the flooding, flood remediation funding, my thought immediately went to, would we qualify under the green fund, under the Climate Change Action Plan? Would that, would that help us? I'm sorry, I'm directing this through you two, to the CAO.
It would be project-based, so if we had a project that we felt was significant and we wanted to tap into the green municipal funds, we could apply. The green municipal funds are not all grants, the lion's share of the green municipal funds are actually low-interest loans, and so if we were going to borrow for a capital project, we could access the green municipal funds for a, perhaps a lower interest rate. What I understand from my colleagues who've gone that route is that the paperwork involved and the time involved in securing funds through that fund is enormous.
Yes, I forgot about that, thank you.
Good. Councillor Langel?
Thank you, your worship. Councillor Mooney made a comment earlier that we need a little help with this motion, and reading it and hearing the discussion, I'm kind of wondering, this is, I have been following it in Truro and Sydney as councillor Mooney has, however, what I think is a suggestion, or what you feel councillor Mooney on this, but maybe let staff delve into it a little bit as to what exactly happened in Sydney and Truro, and what combinations were there before the letter is crafted? I assume we're gonna do that anyway, but I really think staff may want, or CAO may want to talk to his colleagues in Truro and Sydney to see what exactly we're looking for. You're dead on the money here, but I think the wording, before her worship signs the letter, it's kind of critical to get good wording, and I was wondering how you feel like to refer this to staff, to have them come back with their kind of a recommendation, let Dave look at it and Jeff look at it, and kind of say, okay, this is what they did here and this is where we should go at, because I'm, like you, very confident, given our situation on Argyle Street especially, that we would probably have a project there of some kind, but not large enough for the one that councillor Dawes is referring to, but again, it's what the heck, if we can get 50 or 100,000, as you're suggesting councillor, let's go for it. So it's just a thought, you know, we'll take it, kind of a thing. I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but...
What do you think, CAO? Do you, I mean, you're gonna do that anyway, we're not gonna send a letter, but...
Right, well, it's probably, it's probably a very appropriate suggestion, you know, the minister himself is gonna have to turn around and ask questions of staff, because he's just come into the portfolio recently, you know, it may be just as easy for me to reach out to the service, or sorry, municipal fair staff and to the town in rural, or sorry, regional municipality Cape Breton, find out what they did, how they accessed it, and report back to council.
Perfect.
So are we gonna change it and say that staff be directed to look into...do you wanna do that? Go ahead, sorry, councillor.
I was just gonna, my suggestion was I'd like to make a motion that we refer councillor Mooney's motion, not the, councillor Mooney's request, because it's not really a motion, to council, to staff for review and recommendation, and then the intent is there.
Not a motion, nobody seconded that?
Second.
No, no, no.
You need one, yes.
No, but the original...
I don't think.
Linda? Okay, so that's good. So to refer councillor Mooney's request.
And she's seconding councillor Langel's.
All right, so we're not sending this letter until it's looked at by staff, just so everyone's clear on council. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Councillor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship, that the town of Yarmouth send correspondence to Greg Kerr extending best wishes on his retirement and thanking him for his many years of public service.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Okay, councillor Mooney, you can turn your light off. Thank you, okay. Seafood and wine extravaganza? Councillor Langel?
Yes, your worship, I got two items here. First one is my motion is that the town of Yarmouth honor its commitment of 1,500 to the Yarmouth Seafood and Wine Extravaganza for the Yarmouth Harbor Cup Boat Races that were held on Saturday, August the 6th, 2017, and if there's a... And just an explanation, there was a little, I think, misunderstanding between the organizers and staff over this. The motion that we had passed was $1,500. In the discussions around this table at our last meeting, it was noted that Mrs. Carol Hill-Bolgerski and her committee raised $1,400, I'm sorry, raised $1,100, so $1,100 from $2,500 naturally would give a fee of 1,400, so logically you can see where that came from. However, what was not part of that discussion was that the money that she did raise in the end, she ended up with some costs that they were not expecting. They had a higher extra security for the event, and as well, they had to shell out close to $1,000 in trophies and awards that they had to use that money for. So what we're talking about is $100, but this group of volunteers, and I will say I'm only an observer now, I'm not involved, so I'm not in conflict here, so it's only So it's only a hundred dollars, and I know it's not a lot of money, but to them, at this point, it is, because they are nickeling and diming literally to raise, to balance their book. So this motion would allow staff to release, I hope, the additional hundred dollars that we committed to this event and, in hopes of this group will continue the good work for next year. So that is my motion.
Who seconded it? Moved and seconded, okay? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, nay. That's just me, I guess? Only on principle, it's only on principle, because I'm not a fan of, and, and the other thing, I probably would have asked for the, to see the books.
Yeah, which you'll see anyway.
Because we need to see those.
Yeah, you will, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so your second one?
Yeah, and just to comment on that, I think, your worship, they have to provide their financial statements for next year's request anyway, so we'll have full access to that. The second motion is that the Town of Yarmouth write a letter of congratulations and appreciation to Carol Hill-Bogerski and her team, who one hundred percent volunteered for the three-day event, the Yarmouth Seafood and Wine Extravaganza.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Counselor Dawes?
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna turn my light off, turn it back on again, because I did have a question with regard to the first motion.
Okay, okay. So moved and seconded on the second motion. Any further discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I was not present at the, at the July ninth council meeting, unfortunately. I did take the time, though, to watch the stream, I watched the video. And unfortunately, I'm probably guilty of what I am about to complain about myself at this moment. At times, it is very, very difficult to hear what people are saying, because they don't speak right into the microphones. What I understood, because I was not present at, at the last meeting on July ninth, I understood that fourteen hundred dollars had been raised, no, eleven hundred, sorry, eleven hundred dollars had been raised. The original motion was for up to twenty-five hundred. That committee of the whole meeting, I did attend, and during, watching the stream, I understood that it was up to fifteen hundred. It had been changed at the July ninth council meeting. So the amount was then changed to fifteen hundred dollars.
Up to?
Up to fifteen hundred, because fourteen hundred had already been raised. That's what I understood, that it was up to. All right, because I, I was not present.
Good. Okay. Seafood and Wine Extravaganza, event volunteer recognition. Counselor Langel?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Yarmouth provides some form of recognition for those volunteers who create, coordinate, and develop events within our town for the purpose of bringing visitors to Yarmouth each year, and if there's a second or all. Your worship, every year, and I commend Mr. Grant and his recreation team for a volunteer recognition evening, but for the most part, those events tend to be more so for nonprofit organizations, recreational-based items. Similarly, we do other events during the year, but after watching the Seafood and Wine Extravaganza and coming up with Coal Shed Festival with Phil de Mill, and the absolutely incredible job that Dawn Alona Smith and their team did on Sea Fest, these people are often neglected. And these are volunteers, they're, they, they pour their heart and soul into their events, and it would be nice just to have a little function, maybe in the fall or wherever, to just recognize these individuals and thank them. I think of Sherry Sorette, for example, at the Arc, I mean, the hundreds and hundreds of hours they put in at the Arc Center, but no way does, do they ever fit in, if you know what I mean, they don't fit into the other plans. And it's just a thought, and I thought it would be a nice gesture, and I'm not talking anything fancy, some coffee, tea, and maybe some cookies or something. But maybe, your worship, you and Cohen speak on behalf of the town, and maybe present some little certificate, just a, just a thank you for what, what they've done for us.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion?
No.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. And building permit fees, Counselor Langel?
Was a little nervous on this one, because what I'd like to do and what we can do are probably two different things, and, your worship, and I, we chatted at length this morning on this, so there'll be a second motion coming out of this, and I'll explain it. The motion is that the Town of Yarmouth waive any fees for building permits to a maximum of two hundred dollars each for those properties in the area defined by Housing Nova Scotia as part of the Neighborhood Improvement Initiative, notably properties in the area bounded by Water Street, Haskell and Albert Streets, William and Forbes Streets, Argyle Street, and Marshall Lane. And this includes residences on Church Street, Argyle Street, Bernard Street, and Prince Street. And if there's a second or all, I'll explain this. Thank you. The intention, your worship, here is, we have, we had a wonderful announcement, and I, I want to thank you, your worship, for your work behind the scenes on this. I know you work very hard with Minister Burrard on this, and I thank you very much. And Zach was absolutely sterling on this, and it's one heck of a project and one heck of a gem for our town. I know we can't do the whole town, but the fact that we can do just a part of town is wonderful. But the issue is, is these fees are kind of nickeling and diming. And for some of these property owners, just the fact that it's a grant, which is wonderful, because they're not matching it, now, the landlords have to match, but not the residents. So that money is available, but, you know, ten bucks, fifteen bucks, twenty-five bucks means something to some of our residents down there, especially seniors. So the intent here is to focus on that. My second motion is, is maybe we should look at the whole town, you know, as a, as a thought, like, are we nickeling and diming in some of these respects of some things? And this is the, the kind of thought I'm looking at, and I know, Jim, you've been around for, for decades on this sort of thing, but these small projects, like, and as, as, your worship, you and I chatted this morning, we get that money back through tax changes anyway. I mean, to, to a person that's gonna build a five thousand or eight thousand dollar deck on their house, well, guess what, your assessment's gonna probably go up, and we're gonna benefit down the road. But I was reluctant to put that in the motion, because I saw this as a, a partnership that we're now doing with Nova Scotia Housing, which is incredible. But my second motion would be to ask staff to look at this, is, is it possible that we could, what would be the impact upon us, you know, for us to do this, and then to have staff come back with a recommendation? Because I don't know what the budget implement implications are. I know, and this would not be a major implication, I wouldn't think, because you're only looking at about five hundred thousand in total improvement. So I know we have that formula, so that's the intent of this.
Okay, so, so I, I agree with, I agree with the second part. I agree with the first part, but I more so agree with, with the second part, and I'm, I'm gonna say it bluntly, I don't want to be a person across the street from the area that's getting this and saying, you know what, I want to fix my deck, or I want to paint my, you know, do whatever, and, and yet, you know, it's just the across-the-street thing. And so I agree with asking staff what would be the implications, what would be the cost to the town, and, and you're probably right, a lot of it, but we need every penny we can get, but we're still, if this would encourage people to up the ante on their properties, even by a little bit, it's, it's well worth it, because we are trying to reach the entire town when it, when it comes to, you know, doing a little bit of work, and, and that's all, economics is, is amazing on this, because there's a lot of people that were going to need to do all the work that has to be done. So, so there is a motion on the floor, and the motion, yeah, the motion on the floor is that, the one that is written down, that we waive the fees for the, up to two hundred dollars for those that are in that area that were designated by, by Housing Nova Scotia. Can I, I just gotta ask if there's any more discussion? What do you think, CAO? If you don't mind me asking, if you do, get it.
No, that's fine. Well, this, this motion would, would be effective, effective immediately if it were, if it were passed. It might be appropriate, if you want a staff report on the broader issue, to, to table this motion until the next council meeting. In the interim, for committee of the whole, staff will bring forward a report on building permit fees, what the impact is, how we can do this. And then you could proceed with this motion at the next council meeting, or some different motion, depending on what the staff report says.
Are you talking about just this area?
Yes.
Okay. And, and when you, if we table it to the next meeting, this motion, when you come back, you, will you have the implications if we do this for the entire town? That's what I thought. You know why? Because you're just good at what you do.
And I see our planner is still with us. My question is, I'm looking at timeliness, because, as you know, your worship, this project rollout is happening.
Starts next week?
It's starting next week, and this could be delayed until the September meeting. I don't know, could we temporarily waive these fees? Because I know people will probably, will be coming in with this, because our work season is extremely short, if you're lucky enough to find a tradesperson. And I'm trying to figure out how, I just would like this to go as seamless as possible. And I agree with the CAO a hundred percent. Maybe he can give some insight as to how we could, how we could let that, let that go, or temporarily, or somehow that we can encourage people to start these projects now.
So, so let me, let me just throw this out there, that we have a committee of the whole meeting in a couple of weeks. By the time they knock on the doors, they're, they're not gonna knock till next week or the week after, so we've, we've got those couple of weeks. People have to fill out applications, that whole process has to take place. So I'm of the feeling that we have enough time between now and the committee of the whole, however, I also have no problem if council's on board, that if we want to pass, go into a council meeting after that and take care of it, we can certainly do that, so that nobody gets caught in the process. Caroline, you're, does that sound okay?
Sounds good to me, yeah.
Yeah, CAO? Okay. Okay.
So I make the motion to, to refer tables to the next committee.
Committee of the whole, okay? Do I need a motion on, do I need a second or on that?
No.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Reports, council advisory committees. Deputy Mayor? Go ahead.
I move that correspondence from the Halibalu, two thousand and fifteen, requesting support, be received and placed on file.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Okay, wait a second. We need more than one person. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's so good. Any nays?
Nay.
Motion carried. Deputy?
I move that correspondence from the Monarch League of Canada be referred to the IODE for their consideration.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded, discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Linda? Time's pretty short on this one. Would you, somebody be able to check into this, like relatively quickly? I think this is like September ninth, or something like that, so we want to give them time to prepare. Okay, deputy, please?
I move that correspondence from the Yarmouth Facade Society regarding street signage be referred to budget for consideration.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried.
I move that correspondence from the municipality of Digby regarding a kiosk project on the Halifax waterfront be referred back to Yazda for consideration in the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen year.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded, discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried.
I move that Bon Tom be invited to make a presentation to the committee of whole regarding their Acadian Skies and Mick Macklands stewardship council proposal for partnership.
So moved? Seconded, any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
I move that the Town of Yarmouth adopt as our priorities the strategic directions of the One Nova Scotia Report.
So moved, seconded, any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried, that's my favorite one. Go ahead.
I move that the Town of Yarmouth support the amendments to the Liquor Control Act.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried.
I move that the Heritage Grant Program be amended to delete the words "two quotes" and replace with the words "one quote."
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Questions? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried.
I move that the Town of Yarmouth request the municipality of Baragyle to participate in the capital project at the Mariners' Center.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
I move that the matter of the Town of Yarmouth becoming a member of the Chamber of Commerce be referred to budget deliberations for the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen fiscal year.
So moved?
Questions.
Seconded? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried.
I move that council accept these staff recommendations to work with the Department of Municipal Affairs to complete the municipal finance corporation's debt affordability model as a way of forecasting our fiscal position in forming both the Town of Yarmouth tax policy and the inter-municipal agreements and shared services.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Deputy?
I move that council direct staff to apply the grant to the Yarmouth County Agriculture Society against the outstanding debt to the Mariners' Center, and the grant to Four Corners Housing Co-op against the outstanding debt to the Water Utility.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Citizen Advisory Committees. I'm missing a page here. Okay. Deputy?
This is for signage, and really, it's an application to amend the municipal planning strategy and land use by law to review and update provisions relating to signage. So the recommendation is to, we're going to proceed to a public participation to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the MPS and land use by law to update the provisions related to signage.
Public hearing, we already did participation, yeah.
Public hearing, thank you.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried.
So the second item for this, is to, is to, I recommend to refuse the application to amend the municipal planning strategy and the land use by law to permit small-scale business offices in the medium-density residential Main Street zone and concurrently down Zone five, five-oh, Main Street, from general commercial Main Street to medium-density residential Main Street.
So moved, we got a seconder? Moved and seconded? So we have, we have options here, just, I'm just gonna put it out there, that we, that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Advisory Committee, which is to turn down the application, which is what the deputy, deputy minister, you just got promoted, which is what the deputy ma, mayor was just saying, and with that, the process ends, or we defeat the motion and a second motion is made and, and it goes back. So I'm, I'm going to ask this, we have people, by a show of hands, that wanted to speak to this. Okay, so, okay, so let me just frame it like this. I, I want to make it clear, first of all, that this isn't, this is not a public participation meeting, it's a meeting of council, and it's where we make our decisions. And according to the council meeting by law, to make it clear, no person, not a member, shall be heard without the permission of the chair. That, that's me, so I can, I can agree to let you speak at this meeting under some, some guidelines, but any decision by me can be overruled by a majority vote of the members, of the members of council. So I, I am in, I have no problem hearing anyone who wishes to speak within the parameters, but I'm respectfully going to ask, is there anyone on, on council that does not wish that to happen? Okay, so, so we're good with, we're good with that. We're going to allow, we're going to allow members of the public to speak. I'll give you the parameters, because it is a council meeting and not public participation. One person at a time will come to the microphone, and we ask that you state your name and state your address very clearly for us, it's kind, you kind of have to really speak into the microphone. Anyone speaking must address the chair, so you will, you will address, you will address me, and you're confined to the question that's under debate. So, so are we, we are discussing this, the issue with modern realty, the, the motion that was on the floor. I, I probably don't need to say this, but I, I'm going to say it anyway, we, we're avoiding personalities, and we're respectful at all times, that comes just out of our code of conduct. And because I believe there are quite a number who wish to speak, we'll give you up to five minutes, no more, to come to the microphone and, and summarize your thoughts, and that way- and that way, everybody will have an opportunity to be heard. And, and I'll just say this as well, if anyone, speaker or audience member is in any way disrespectful or disruptive, we'll, we'll just ask that you excuse yourself, because we really want to hear what you have to say, but it needs to be done in a respectful manner. So if, if we're okay with that, who would like to speak? And I'll, okay, sir, if you would come to the microphone? And I will, just got to find my timer.
Your worship, my name is Stephen Howitt, I live at 15 Brunswick Street in Yarmouth.
Yep, you'll have to speak right away.
Do I need to be a little bit closer?
Sorry.
Is that better for you?
Yes.
All right. So my name is Stephen Howitt, I live at 15 Brunswick Street here in Yarmouth, I've been a resident for a year. Now, in pertaining to this, it seems to be, the question is when we're going to do it. In the, the town blueprint that was launched from the town hall back in 2010, it clearly states that we were going to extend our commercial downtown from King Street through to Stars Road. It is a 20-year plan, so it comes down, your worship, to when are we actually going to put it into effect? I believe personally that it should be up to the citizens of Yarmouth when we put this into the motion and when it should become in effect. It doesn't cost any money, we're going to be looking at it anyway in the near future, but I do believe that we should let the town of Yarmouth speak and let their voice be heard in reference to this and see what everybody else's opinion is. Do we do it now, or do we wait later on into the 20-year plan that we set out for ourselves?
Good, thank you. Someone else like to speak?
Your worship, Frank Sonier, I live in Arcadia. Been a citizen in Arcadia for the last 45, 46 years. I know most of the people on council. I have a little note here that I would like to read, okay?
Certainly.
The downtown business sector, with its stores as it used to be, has sustained me and my family, my parents, and my parents' parents, but as life would have it, change is the only constant in life. If we don't adapt and prepare for these changes, then we are left behind as the world moves on. Due to the completion of our new highways, SoBees and Zellers saw the importance of expanding to accommodate a larger population. Of course, SoBees is still doing very well, while other competition drove Zellers away. There is a mini mall in the Dayton area, as well as two grocery stores. I'm expressing these messages to you simply because we cannot just lay back and try to hold the town, downtown business sector to the small area that it now commands, that is, from Forest Street to the old jailhouse. We teach our children to reach for the sky and dare to dare their dreams come true. As schoolteachers, we teach the same, that our children of today will be the business people of tomorrow. For me, and many other parents, our children are at it now. They are our children of yesterday, today. A town looking for growth is not going to find it by keeping boundaries closed, hoping that more businesses will come downtown when others are moving out. Personally, I see the boundaries to include Main Street from Fountain to Fountain, Argyle Street to Vancouver Street. So far over the years, it seems that we have been reactive to change and not preact, proactive creating our own destiny. Forgot to tell you that Wizet is my daughter, Tiffany is my niece. They have worked hard in a business that dictates long hours, keeping them away from family in a real estate market that is not ideal, to say the least. I also know that Wizet has been instrumental in promoting the town to all her clients, especially to outsiders asking about our part of the province. She was involved with the welcoming of the new ferry and participated with all hands-on deck project. I also know that she is proud of Yarmouth, but makes it difficult when the situation such as it is in the present case. I can see only good things happening if Yarmouth's properly marketed to the tri-counties, the province, and the rest of the world. To try and hold on to what the Yarmouth downtown business sector used to be is a futile effort, in my opinion. I am not suggesting that the downtown area cannot be profitable, but it will not improve its present status by holding on to outdated town boundaries. With opening the boundaries, as I have already mentioned, and with proper marketing, Yarmouth will greatly benefit as the already established hub of southwest Nova Scotia. Yarmouth is situated on the map as a destination to come because of our new highways starting and ending here. Other towns have been affected negatively because of the new highways, because the new highways bypassed them. Next to Bridgewater, from Halifax to Yarmouth, on either side of the province, Yarmouth has the largest population, Bridgewater being a little bit over 8,000 and Yarmouth closer 7,000. In conclusion, and in my opinion, council must seriously consider the benefits of not just rezoning the area where Modern Realty is presently located, but rather allow for growth by opening the business sector from Argyle Street to Vancouver Street. As we already know, the idea is to improve traffic in general by being open to new blood, establishing businesses along the whole Main Street. I also believe that in order to grow and expand, that town council must work on new strateg, strategic plans to include other ways to grow our town rather than depend on what used to be. Sometimes a status quo is not good enough, and not to partake on new direction for Yarmouth and its economic development may just well be more of a risk than trying to preserve the past. There is an opportunity here to open up Yarmouth and allow it to be the thriving hub of southwest Nova Scotia. I honestly believe that we have good people here in Yarmouth, there are so many good things happening in Yarmouth, and I'm coming to the end here. The Mariners Centre and all that it brings to Yarmouth, the Old Timers National Baseball Tournament, as mentioned tonight, the Yarc, possibly of a new sports complex, the Water Street Projects, summer festivals, the soon-to-be sports umbrella, committee creating a new voice for all sports for the town and the two local municipalities that I'm involved in. The request here is that you carefully address the present downtown scenario versus expanding the professional business sector to include all of Main Street already identified. I agree that the downtown area is the heartbeat of our town. However, if future businesses decide to open up outside the town boundaries, it would best to open up Main Street, allowing a better chance at a thriving community for all concerns rather than split and divide. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Would someone else like to speak? Welcome, Debbie.
Your worship, my name is Debbie Roberts. I am not a resident of Yarmouth Town, but I'm a resident of Yarmouth County, and I think that most people on the council know me and know that there is no larger Yarmouth booster than I am. I started a group with over 3,000 people just to promote the Yarmouth area, two people in the Yarmouth area, and my photography of Yarmouth has been seen all over the world. And I can't pretend that I know everything about planning committees or what the grand plan for Yarmouth is, but I have to say that this refusal to consider rezoning that area concerns me, not just because these people have done an amazing job of building a business in the Yarmouth area in the last couple of years, they went from being nobody to being the number-two real estate agency in Yarmouth, and I think this is the kind of thing that should be applauded, not discouraged. I don't really understand what the decision is that they can't locate in a building that they own that is on Main Street in Yarmouth when they're surrounded by businesses. I don't see what is the difference if they're a hair salon or a real estate agency, it's not a place that requires a high volume of parking, it's not a strip club that's going to make us look bad, it's a booming business, and I personally think that if they were forced out of this building, it's still another empty building on Main Street, it's just not further down in the southern part of Main Street. I think that that would be a shame, and I think it would be a shame to see the business be relocated to another area because we don't have the foresight to keep it here. And that's really all I have to say about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie. Someone else like to speak? Come ahead. What's that?
One at a time, or is it okay for here at the same time?
You can be here at the same time, as long as you lean, make sure you lean into the microphone.
Lean in. Oh, you're the chair. Sorry. I didn't prepare anything because we've spoken at length about this numerous times, and we just hope that council will consider looking at our application and being open to change, and we'd like to work with you to do this respectfully. We didn't want to cause any drama or controversies in any of this, so we'd love to work with the town together. We're both positive people, we have a good outlook for the town, and we'd like to be a part of that. We don't want to have to relocate or move out or any of these things, and I know we made an error when we moved there, and we just would like to respectfully ask to be considered, is all.
Thank you. Tiffany, did you want to?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to speak next, please? I'll ask two more times, would anybody else like to speak to this? And the final, final call, would anybody in the audience like to speak to this issue? Okay? So now, goes to council. Councilor Langell?
Thank you, your worship. I'm not a, a member of the PAC, so I've been kind of on the, the wings on this one. So if you'll indulge me, I just kind of want to make sure I'm understanding this issue because I'm basically, what I'm seeing in the media seems to be a little different than what is in actuality, and I know there are members of the PAC around the table. So if I'm being led in the wrong direction, I'd really appreciate if somebody could correct an old guy who's not feeling the best nowadays. So my understanding is that the current property owners of Modern Realty originally owned the building. The building was rented to a beauty salon, So Delicious, who has left the building to move into another building on Main Street, leaving the existing building empty. The company, Modern Realty, apparently has expanded, outgrown their quarters in the downtown where their offices were located, and moved into their own property, which is at 550 Main Street, where they set up shop in the realty business. I understand there was some discussions with our planner regarding that, and the, the issue with, with the land use was addressed, with the whole zoning issue came up, and hence the drama is before us today. And this has been going on for some time, and it's unfortunate. I, for one, feel very badly for the, the company. However, we had a similar issue very recently involving another professional business that wanted to locate in Milton, I believe, and I'm just thinking I'm in the same area, and this was regarding, I believe it was Sheila Nichols, who wanted to set up a professional office down literally across the street from this premise, and this council took the position of no, that we're not going to, we would not respect that. Now, my understanding is further that we are in the process of doing a municipal planning strategy review at this time, and there is discussion, and the first speaker, the gentleman that spoke earlier, may comment when we're, are we going to do it, and that's something I'm assuming will be addressed under the MPS, but that's down the road a year or two. I've heard from numerous property owners in Yarmouth who've got some concern over changing the MPS to accommodate Modern Realty. Deputy Mayor McLeod has been on the PAC for many years and was one of the ones that was crafting, did the crafting of the original MPS, and it was designed in a way to basically save our downtown, to try to keep professional offices especially in there. So my question is this, I mean, this could be answered to the, I think to the planner would be my question, if you don't mind, CAO. So if this should go ahead, if this should go ahead and we agree tonight to allow this to happen, the precedent is set, does that mean that banks, for example, could move from Main Street if they wanted to locate on Stars Road? Does that mean that other realty companies who are in the downtown core could come before this council and apply to this council, and they could move? Because I do know some of them are more anxious to move to the Stars Road area. Is there a risk that we could see an exit of established businesses in the downtown core that we now have, and the only reason in some cases we may have them is because of the, the strategy we have in mind? Is that risk there? And maybe, Deputy Mayor, you may want to, or Caroline, I'm not sure who I'm, I just wanted to, to ask that. I know what the answer is, as we say, as Mr. Barrow would say, you never ask a question you don't know the answer to, but I just wanted to make sure I'm hearing the right answer, sort of, just make sure I'm on the same page. Thank you for your indulgence, your worship.
Thank you. Okay, so Caroline, did you wish, do you want to answer that, deputy?
He was asking Caroline, so...
You go ahead, Jim, and if there needs, if you need me to clarify when you're done, I can answer the question.
Ken, you're right, in 1988, when we completed the plan in which you were on council with me at that time, we agreed that we would keep all the professional offices within the central business district defined at that time. And it's been my experience that, that has worked, and it's worked wonderfully well. I, I would say, from a financial point of view, our, our town, our town of Yarmouth is recognized as one of the best managed municipalities in the province, partly due to the fact that we only, we keep the offices within the CBD. I know from experience, just being on Main Street, that we have several holiday Mondays in any one calendar year. Pick a holiday and traffic in downtown is reduced by 50%, so that once we let an office to leave the town, leave the town boundaries that we've set back in 1988, we're going to get applications, PAC will get applications on a regular basis for asking for consideration that we could have or, and shouldn't give to Modern Realty. I guess I could go on, but I'm, I'm content with that answer now. If Caroline wishes to add, or Jeff, I'm happy to listen.
Caroline, if you want to.
Sure, I'm just going to try and address some of those questions that Ken just asked. So I think the first thing you said was if we agree to this tonight, which is not a, a really an option, right now, what's the motion before you is to consider to refuse. Should you wish to consider the application, then it'll have to go back to public participation with the Planning Advisory Committee, as the mayor stated at the start of the meeting. Your next question was, who will leave the downtown? Right now, this is a fairly controlled amendment that's been applied for. It would allow professional office uses, so your lawyers, your real estate offices, your accountant offices, and it would allow them to move out to a decent-sized area outside of the central business district, but would keep them to Main Street. It wouldn't allow the banks to leave, not yet, but... It wouldn't allow the banks to leave, not yet, but I, if we said yes to this and this policy, it's been in place and this is all part of the policy, it's right in every statement that we're going to maintain the financial institutions and the professional offices and that's how we're going to create a viable downtown. If we allow the professional offices to leave them, what's our justification to keep the banks here? So for this application, it wouldn't approve it, but for the future ones, it would make it difficult to refuse. So I think that answers your questions.
Any more discussion, anyone? We did that. You can come up, you can come up one more time.
So, I'm Stephen again. Hi, I worship. I'd really like to address the concerns with the banks. I've provided Caroline some alternatives to that. I am in the finance industry. I've worked actually personally with CIBC as a small business advisor before. They don't want to move. The banks are, to move in a bank, you're looking at millions of dollars. You're not looking at $100,000 to go and build a new building. You're not looking at a small, little expense. You're looking at hiring high-end security, moving like hundreds of thousands of dollars with the cash in and out of a bank. You'll get, moving a safe, you're looking at new security systems, new things. All the banks want to do in Yarmouth is modernize their bank. All they need to do is to allow drive-through banking. That's the only service that they're missing in Yarmouth and if we allow them to have drive-through banking on Stars Road, it's not going to impact the traffic downtown. The people who want to go in and talk to the teller on a regular basis will go down and talk to a teller. All the banks across Canada have proven this time and time again. That's why there's no cuts in teller staffing anywhere across the country in banks because people still want that one-on-one relationship. The only thing the drive-through banking will allow them to do on Stars Road is not do the cash back at Walmart or not do the cash back at Superstore that they do anyway, right? All the banks are looking for is to provide the same level of service across Canada so when they say on their commercials and on their responses, everywhere across Canada you get the same service, they can actually mean it. And when it comes down to moving a huge industry like a bank that's already in a heritage building that's probably paid for or the rent is next to nothing for them, they've already made that investment. They don't want to empty it out because who are they going to put in there? They're then going to have to try and sell another building downtown. They don't want that headache. It's not worth it to them to do that. And that seems to be the big thing is, yeah, we have some of the major banks downtown, they're not going to move. And even in this amendment that we're looking at possibly putting through, all we're doing is extending our current downtown. In the blueprint, we already agreed as a town that we wanted to do this, that we want to expand our downtown. We want to build a bigger and larger community. We're not saying we want to shut down our downtown. We're not saying, hey, everybody pick up and move. We're looking at literally a small area. People are saying it's a very large area. We're already allowing professional buildings to go in almost down to the same spot we're looking at. The only area in which that's under review right now is the, the main concern is the end of it which is classified as Stars Road. And the reason they classified that area as the same as Stars Road is so they can have Wendy's and McDonald's and all the other big stores on that corner. That's the only reason that we classified it in that in the beginning, in the first place. If you look at how many available locations that you could possibly put it in, you're looking at 10 locations. And that's if every person moved out and said, I don't want to live here anymore, right? You're not looking at, you know, 50 or 60 businesses moving down there. There's no retail frontage for somebody to move their business from Main Street down there to sell merchandise. It just doesn't work. You're looking at maybe a lawyer's office or, you know, Wood Gundy just moved, but they're still on Main Street, right? Most people have leases. This isn't something that's going to affect us in a year or two or three or four down the road. Most of these people have five-year leases, six-year business leases, right? Like, the big impact to the downtown core isn't going to be whether we let a couple professional businesses move a further down. All it's going to do is make it a little bit more economical for businesses because now there's more places for them to choose, right? We have a big building that used to be nothing fancy and sands and all that. We have a landlord there. I know of two companies that want to move in there, but the landlord doesn't want to split the building up. That's why we have a giant empty spot, because he doesn't want to split it up. He wants one person to pay $4,000 a month for 17,000 square feet. Most small businesses in a small town don't need 17,000 square feet. If they need 17,000 square feet, they're going to go out to Stars Road. That's why we have Stars Road, is for the big box stores, right? Downtown is meant for, hey, do you know what? I think I like that. I need, oh, I need a birthday card or I need a knickknack or, hey, I'm coming down to visit on Canada Day. Canada Day was fantastic. It was the first time I actually got out of my house down here and it was one of the best days I've ever had in Yarmouth. It was beautiful, all the, everything that we're doing in Yarmouth is in the right direction. We need to expand and I believe that the time is now to do that. And for everybody's concerns about banks and big businesses leaving downtown, there's huge costs. Most of you guys own businesses, you understand the costs of moving and hiring people to do that, right? Like, it's not a small task to just get up and move and a bank is like 10 times worse. So I truly don't think that anybody should be weighing on the fact of whether or not the banks are going to leave the downtown, but that seems to be one of the biggest concerns about everybody, you know, because it does make up the large portion of our downtown. Don't get me wrong, I understand that. And there's no, even if we extended it down there, there's no place for them to move down there. Like, even if they wanted to move down by Wendy's, there's no lots available. They'd have to tear down buildings to do it. It's not going to happen, right? So I just want to get rid of that and also I don't know if the PAC went over the blueprint plan when this was all done, but maybe that's something that everybody should review if it wasn't done or, because when I went through it and I looked, like, I researched everything and from a citizen's point of view, I can't find very much information on the PAC documents. Is there a place that I'm missing that I haven't been able to review or is there a way for me to pull that up? Because I've personally gone and looked and spent 40, 50 hours in the last week looking for this, taking time out of my job to do so because I want Yarmouth to grow, but I can't seem to find anything above and beyond what's on the website, your worship.
So that's a question. So everything, the PAC, as, I mean, and I'm on the PAC, so everything is provided to us at every meeting and I think everyone understands that this was discussed at five meetings in depth. The PAC members have, because, because some of them have called me during that saying, wow, this is, this is a lot of information and a lot of, you know, detail and they studied it. They read it, they measured the pros and cons. They've looked at every document available, every document available and it was given to them to look, to look through all these. So everything that you've mentioned, it has been, it really has been considered. They've considered everything. And I'll say this, this is not an easy decision. I'll also say this is not about Modern Realty. This is about, you know, but you know what happens tomorrow is that it's about, it's about one business, you know? It's about one business and it's not that, it's about all small scaled business owners in that downtown core. You know, the land use bylaw that's in place, it bestows property rights for the individuals that are, that are in place where they are and those property rights have value. So council has to be thoughtful, strategic and we can't, it's, it would be the worst thing to just react to a one-on-one, which is what I'm saying. This is not about Modern Realty. I mean, for me, and I hope it's not for anyone at the table, it's not about Modern Realty and I know it wasn't at the PAC. It's about the bigger picture and all the small, small offices and the entire, you know, the entire district that we're talking about. And I would also say, and I could be proven wrong, but, you know, one of the things that scares investment away is, is that political uncertainty. I'm not talking about the small politics. I'm talking about, I'm talking about Mr. Smith that lands his business in, in the business district and when he does that, he wants to know that the town is supporting the fact that everything is where it is, that everything is not going to leave. And we understand that everybody isn't going to pick up and leave, but that's one of the things that I've, and I've spoken to investors and I've spoken to potential investors and that's what they're saying. They're saying, I want that certainty. I want to know that if I land in a certain area, that everything isn't going to change all the time. So it's, it's a balance.
And I completely understand that, your worship. And, but it's been what, 1990 or 1980 since we have? That's quite a long time.
Yeah, and you know, and I'll say this as well. I consider myself very proactive. I think I'm a visionary, I know that, because people laugh at me and say, you can't stick to this. I'm a visionary and I see the future and I see the bigger picture and I see all that. But I will sit here and I will say the reason that we have a downtown and many towns don't is because council from year to year have stuck to their guns on these regulations. And I don't, this is just me, the rest of council can speak to this, but from my perspective, that's not, that's not staying in the past, that's exactly the opposite. It's seeing, it's seeing the future and it's, and it's, it's ensuring that what is will be. And we've been through some, nobody would argue, we've been through some nasty times and people laugh, a lot of people will call me and they'll say, you call that a downtown? And I say, I absolutely do. And right now, I feel like we're, we're on that upswing and if we, this is just my, this is just me, because there's seven people at this table. When we, when we bend to this and we're giving permission for some to leave and then others leave, but we're also saying to those that have invested, oh, well. So it's, there's, there's so many, and I will say this, I respect what you're saying. When we do talk personally, you're right, these girls are, they're amazing, they're positive, they've grown their business and the hardest thing is to sit at a table and just say, wait a minute, it's not about one, it's about, it's a boat. You let one go or do you maintain for 200?
Right, and it comes down to the growth of Yarmouth and I really think this decision should be given to Yarmouth. I understand that this decision's been held to the council for a very long time, but I believe that it's time for the town to speak up and say, are we ready for it or aren't we ready for it? But that's my, my opinion and hopefully the council's heard that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there any more discussion at the council table? So what we have before us is the motion to refuse the application to amend the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to permit small scaled business offices in the medium density residential Main Street zone and concurrently downzone 550 Main Street from general commercial Main Street to medium density residential Main Street zone as outlined in the planner's report. Any more discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, motion carried. So that's, that ends it. Okay, all right. You can have that. Okay, deputy? Who seconded that? Danny? Yeah. Okay, I just need to find my place. Is it this? Okay, so we're at the recommendations for, for public hearing from tonight, which was what we did at 7 o'clock, okay? So to enter into a development agreement with the town for a four... To enter into a development agreement with the town for a four dwelling unit building on Lot 2 Argyle Street to concurrently amend the land use bylaw to extend the Argyle Street collector classification to Ellis Road and to concurrently amend the existing development agreement at 187 Argyle Street to remove provisions for Lot 2 as outlined in the planner's report. Deputy?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Councilor McCosse?
No.
Wait a second now. I don't know where you are. Go ahead.
A quick question on, on the, the owners, are they partnering with provincial, provincial housing? Did I hear it right or not hear it right? Is it, is it, is it townhouse, low-income house, high-income house? I missed, missed the first, first couple of sentences that were read off.
Do you want?
Yeah, go ahead Caroline.
So this is Andrew Cameron with Ocean Breeze Estates.
Yeah, I know who it is, yeah, yeah.
And he doesn't own the property. He's put in an offer on it, a conditional offer based on this development agreement being approved and if it does get approved, then he's going to purchase the property and do what he's done with Ocean Breeze Estates, put in a similar four unit building and he's gone through provincial housing funding to do those developments, so he's going to follow the same process with this.
Okay, so it's, it's going to be the same type of rental and all, what he has in his other units?
Yes, with a few more requirements about the style and how it looks, but it's the same concept.
It's not, it's not like on a fixed income housing or anything like that?
No, it's that he'll get some funding from the government to help build the buildings, but he has to keep the rent at a set value for a certain number of years.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's basically, that's what I thought I heard, but I wasn't really sure. Okay, great, thank you.
Good? Okay. Let motions on the floors, are there any more discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And we have Heritage Advisory Committee, recommendations from Heritage Advisory, August 6, 2015. Did you, Councilor Langill?
Thank you, thank you, your worship. We did have a meeting of the Heritage Advisory Committee and with council's indulgence, we did not have a quorum, okay? But considering the timeliness of these two items, we're bringing it to council for your consideration of the members who were there, so how council wishes to deal with it is council's concern. Yeah, you're kind of a Heritage Committee tonight, anyway. So the first motion, first motion deals with, the first recommendation we're suggesting is the Heritage Incentive Funds. We put in place an incentive fund program in our budget year. Our planner contacted all of the residents who have municipally heritage properties and invited them to submit an application for joint funding, for funding, and this is 50/50 funding. When normally this would not be, this could be an issue, but it's not an issue because we only had five applicants. So there was really no selection as such. The staff reviewed all of the applications. Staff were very comfortable with them, it was within the budget, so nobody got left out. So that's why we're bringing it before you tonight, simply saying, hey, let's get on with this instead of delaying it till September. If these people want to start working, we know they are. And council will remember that the intent is that this is matching dollars, we are matching them. So that's the most they can get is $2,000 and that's what we're giving. So the motion we're reading is to award the 2015 Heritage Incentive Funds to 3 Sycamore Street, $2,000. 29 Carlton Street, that's not my house by the way, $2,000. I'm at 31. 23 Clement Street, $2,000. 37 Alma Street, $1,388.67 or up to $2,000. And 225 Main Street, $2,000 is outlined in the planner's report.
Moved and seconded. Councilor Dawes?
Okay, thank you. Yes, I have a question. To the Chair of the Heritage Committee, these funds, were they applied for by the individual homeowners? All right, these did not come from the Heritage Committee members themselves? All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
We've kind of put an unwritten rule in place that members of the committee would not be eligible to apply for that. However, councilors could, just conflict of interest, but where the committee does do the recommendations, that we would not be eligible for those grants, you know, as such. So no, that's understood and the applications you see before... And the applications you see before you, I mean, it's quite amazing the amount of work they're doing, so it worked out quite well.
Good. Okay, questions being called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, and the second one, your worship, again, it's, we've done this kind of a thing, but just to, what happened is, council has already agreed to apply to the province for designation of Frost Park. But if you will recall, there was a suggestion that it go back to the staff to prepare the application. So you now have the application before you. So my, the motion is simply to submit the application. We've already agreed, we're going to do the provincial designation of Frost Park by an earlier motion, but now we'd like to go forward now with the application and start the process. Yeah. And this, your worship, we're doing for, for one basic reason, money, and also for heritage designation. The provincial Heritage Advisory Council, which I'm chair of, we have a sum of close to $250,000 that we make available to different funds, and Frost Park would very nicely fit within that, and there's, you know, we can fund up to $20,000 a year in matching dollars. So, that would really give us an opportunity for the town to, to do work in Frost Park. There's some remedial work we need to do, some work with the headstones, et cetera. So that's, that's our goal, and plus, the heritage of the park is awesome as well. So, I know I'm quite anxious to see this designated. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Okay, moved and seconded? Questions being called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Reports for information? Okay, so, questions for committee chairs? I just, I just thought of this just a second ago. Who is looking after the Doug Malottson Park? Do we have a committee? What's going on with that?
I can speak to that, your worship, a bit. At this point, we've approved the, kind of the plan. Rodney Doucette, the park staff, has, I believe, met with Mr. Daley on a couple of occasions, who was actually doing the work, and if you may notice, there is construction started there now. We will be meeting as communities in bloom in September, and at our September meeting, we're going to start looking at how we're going to do it. We don't expect anything to happen this year, it's a five-year project, but once we knew exactly where Mr. Daley was putting the buildings, where the configuration of the buildings are, we then can start finalizing the plan, so next year, we can start doing things like walkways and things along that line. If you recall, your worship, in budget deliberations, we didn't really allocate any money to that project, with the understanding that this was more or less just a setup year, let's see what, what's going to happen. And what we're kind of doing is, some of the vision, like, is Mr. Daley does any excavation, we're kind of keeping dirt on the premise, we're kind of working with him in the overall model, so that, so that he knows what we're up to. So that'll be happening at our September meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right. Did we have any additions? I didn't jot any down. We had removals, okay? Approval of invoices. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Date of next meeting, September 10, 2015. So are we going in camera?
Yes.
Yep, we have one item to discuss in camera. Motion to go in camera. Okay.
Counts on. Counts on.
Yeah, they haven't adjourned because they're going to go talk with somebody else in private, but, yeah. And I'll be calling you to let you know the council approved your grant for your heritage.
I missed you.
You're working late at your home, aren't you?
I'm almost finished, outside. I was going to have a party on the 28th, but I'm not going. I'm postponed because we got the permanent residency. So I have to go to Morocco. I'm not, I'm not going to. I'm going to France when I come back, because I have to go to Morocco to bring my stuff. I'm really happy.
I'm waiting for my name.
You guys didn't even see me.
You know my date, right?
We said how a couple of times.
Ah, come on. Ooh, la la.
I'm glad I didn't have to speak.